Welcome to the City Council Candidate Forum. As you can see tonight, we actually, not up here, but we have four candidates total that are seeking office, two for post two, and that's Mr. William Ilk and also Mr. Mike Sospit. Unfortunately, Mike could not be here tonight, so it is just Will representing post two. And then for post four, we have Mark French and Jamie McCracken. For this forum, each candidate will have three minutes to introduce themselves, two minutes to respond to each question, and two minutes for a closing statement. Candidates have not seen the questions. Our candidates are seated in alphabetical order by last name and by post. Each opening statements will be given in alphabetical order. Each following question will be answered by the next candidate in alphabetical order. Our timekeepers tonight are Savannah Garrett and Brenda Mason here in the front. Savannah will be holding up, actually I think Brenda's going to be holding up the warning signs when you have one minute left, 30 seconds left, and 15 seconds, and then when your time has run out. We will strictly enforce the time limit, so please hold all applause until the end of the forum. I should have introduced myself if you cannot tell I am the rookie. My name is Mandy Power. I'm the President and CEO of the Dawson County Chamber of Commerce, and we are very excited to host a candidate forum and share information with our citizens. So we are so happy that we have our room full tonight, and thank you all for being here. But we're going to kick it off with opening statements. A reminder, gentlemen, you have three minutes, and we will begin with William Ilk.
All right. Check, check. There we go. All right, well, first of all, I just want to thank Mandy and her team at the Dawson County Chamber for putting this on. Also, for the Board of Education and Dawson County Middle School, thank you for letting us use your space. Also, Dawson County News for always reporting on our county and our city. I have a short amount of time to tell you everything I can about who I am, so let's get right to it. My name is William Ilk. I'm 35 years old. If I don't know you yet, I want to get to know you because I am an extreme extrovert. I have a son named Beckett who is in kindergarten and goes to school at Robinson Elementary School, and a wife who owns her own company called Cassie Cakes. We are members of First Baptist Church of Dawsonville, and I am passionately in love with Jesus Christ. He is my Savior and has radically changed my life. I work as an investment advisor as well as in full-time ministry, so my for-profit work kind of helps to fund my nonprofit work. I was born and raised in Coming, Georgia, graduated from Forsyth Central High School in 2004. I went to college on scholarship at Gainesville State College where I graduated in the top 10% of my class with my associates, and that was before they got purchased by University of North Georgia. But then I transferred to Bernal University where I graduated in the top 5% of my class there. I started my career at the Alliance Theater in Midtown, and I absolutely love the arts. I was appointed to City Council in May of this year, and the reason I was is because former Councilmember Mr. Steve Tolson, he moved outside the city. I like to ask people a question that my pastor recently asked me. He said, "What are your spiritual gifts?" I feel like my God has gifted me in leading, teaching, encouraging, and collaborating. If I could tell you only one thing about my leadership, it's that I believe you've got to have a vision. The Bible says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." So friends, voters, before you do something, you better have a vision. You better be a part of something that you can believe in, and I believe in what this city is doing. I believe in what our community stands for, and I will do everything in my power to work the hours I need to in order to keep our city beautiful and our citizens happy. There's a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. that says, "If a man is called to be a street sweeper, he should sweep streets even as Michelangelo painted, or Beethoven played music, or Shakespeare wrote poetry. He should sweep streets so well that all the hosts of heaven and earth will pause to say, 'Here lived a great street sweeper who has done his job well.'" My goal over the next hour is for you to say to yourself, "Will has done a great job so far, and I want him to continue representing me in this city." Thank you.
Perfect. All right. We will move. I think you had that time perfectly. Yes. All right, now we will move from opening statements from Mark French.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the Chamber for hosting. I echo Will's sentiments in thanking the News. And those of you who are interested in what's going on in our city and our community to be here this evening, it's genuinely appreciated. As far as myself, I'm Mark French, obviously, and I just now wrapping up my first term on the City Council. You see, fit to send me back. I'll start my next one in January. What I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about myself. I've lived in Dawsonville for 12 years, or just a few days over 12, we'll just round it down for ease. I moved here from Delano. I grew up there. My dad was with the company that built Georgia 400 up from Highway 53. They loved the area, so they settled there. I fell in Dawsonville by the grace of God, and I like calling it home, too. I live over on the north side of town, District 4. If you look at the map, you'll see that covers a pretty wide area. I think it runs everywhere from the Moncton County line over to the Atlanta Motorsports Park. Just because I'm from that district doesn't mean I don't want to hear from everybody, because I do represent everybody. I just happen to reside within that area. I bring with me to the table more than 20 years of local government experience. I've built it. I've reached the point in my life where I've learned enough, and I have something to offer, and I'd like to continue to offer my services to the city. We've had some great accomplishments in the past four years. I think we've got some room for improvement, as with anything, we all have, always have room to improve. One of the areas I'd like to see us improve is going to be our relationship with the Board of Commissioners. This past year has been challenging at best, but it's something I believe that we can work to resolve for everybody's benefit, because just because you live in the city doesn't mean you're no longer a county resident. And we don't stand on my record. We've been fiscally responsible. We've continued the trends of our predecessors, and that we do not levy property tax. That's something I'm quite proud of, and I'd like to see us be able to continue as long as possible. And thank you again for being here this evening, and hope you all enjoyed it. Good luck.
All right, now we will hear from Jamie McCracken.
All right. Mandy, the Chamber of Commerce, thank you guys so much for putting this event on, really. So also, tons of familiar faces out here. I know you guys watched this online on the YouTube channel. It is super encouraging to have people come out and support, you know, the local government. Also, make sure you come out and vote in a second. No matter who you vote for, you have a voice. So I'm Jamie McCracken. I grew up in Forsyth County, was born there, grew up there, moved to Dawsonville, Dawson County, about 23 years ago. Been here, been involved, you know, local churches, my wife and I, but also moved into the city, to the Old Gold Creek neighborhood, about almost five years ago coming up. Hardly been spent that long. But my wife and I have been married for 24 years. We have an anniversary coming up here in a couple of weeks. Congratulations to you. But anyway, my four children, I have a daughter just graduated UGA at Macon Dogs. My son works at the hardware store here in town. You probably see him all over the place. Matthew Lilly's a senior, and Michael Missis here at the junior high school in Dawsonville. So had a lot of involvement in the schools. My wife is, you know, taught here, you know, substitute, taught, been involved in everything. Also, I think she helped serve Mills at First Baptist Church in Dawsonville. So we've been here for quite a while, pretty involved with the community. I've served on the HOA Board at Gold Creek, Vice President there. Got to meet a lot of people through that. Lot of challenges around here with some neighborhoods and things. If you guys are familiar with Gold Creek, there's been some challenges there. I'm currently serving on the Downtown Development Authority here at Dawsonville. Once again, great honor doing that, to see Dawsonville with all this expansive residential growth, you know, also trying to catch up with the commercial side. Also, I'm alumni of Leadership Forsyth. My background is leadership, still on board of a company. I've been in leadership for about 15 years. So budgets are no new thing for me, people's no new thing for me, kind of a sentiment of William had. It is awesome to be able to exercise our gifts in our career, but it would be fun to do it here in the city, and looking forward to maybe being a part of that even more than the Downtown Development Authority. Thank you all.
All right. And just a reminder, we will go to the next person. So Mark, you will answer this question first. Beyond attendance of City Council meetings, what do you believe the role of a City Council member should be?
Obviously, I think we all can look around and say that we have two ears and one mouth, so it goes back to my philosophy, that you should listen twice as much as you talk. So I think in order to make your participation in the various meetings which you are called upon to make decisions, is to listen to your constituents, to do your research, to best represent the people who put you there.
Perfect. All right, and we'll move to Jamie. Would you like her to repeat the question? Sure. Beyond attendance of City Council meetings, what do you believe the role of a City Council member should be?
Absolutely. Grow in the city forward. You know, Dawsonville is one of those unique places where there's this ton of heritage behind us, history, and we celebrate that, you know, in our town, but also embracing today and making sure we grow forward. And I think a City Councilman has a ton of influence, you know, as Mark said, listening to the people 100%, and, you know, making sure that they have a voice. The city, there is a, you know, this thing about let's don't have a city government. I've heard that before, heard that from a lot of other cities and towns, but if there is no city government, you live in the city, your vote is wired down, you know, you lose your, you lose your voice. So I think we have a great opportunity. For the City Councilman, you have a ton of influence on the decisions that are made inside the city limits. I mean, it's just grow in the city forward.
All right, so role of City Council. So being the new kid on the block at City Council, I had no idea how many emails come back and forth. So part of it is obviously you've got to stay plugged in to the city and what's going on there, or else it is very easy to fall behind quickly. I look at my role as City Council honestly to be a bridge. Okay, I don't want to be a wall. I want to be a bridge, and that takes people from where they are to where they want to be. So whether it's a business, whether it's a neighborhood, whether it's a, whatever it is, my job is to try and look at it, how can I be a bridge to help people from where they are to get them to where they want to be? And I feel like local government, that's part of our job. And so I would say, other than doing the City Council meetings, you've got to figure out how you can collaborate well with others, because you can't do this without collaborating with others.
Great. All right, this next one, we'll start with Jamie. Question two. Governments have an equal obligation to be fiscally responsible and to provide services to the citizens. What kind of capital or infrastructure improvements and services do you think the city should be providing that it is not already?
Right. So currently, the focus needs to be roads and traffic around the city. I've heard that from so many folks around the city, but luckily, we're very fortunate here, Dawsonville, the infrastructure is very strong. Everything I can gather, you know, there's been some good planning that's going into that, but there definitely needs to be a focus on traffic and management of that through our city.
Yeah, I think being fiscally responsible, you know, something that's kind of going on behind the scenes, not sure if you guys are aware of or not, is a wastewater treatment plant that the city's trying to do right now, and it's cost a lot of money to get a wastewater treatment plant up there. So I think part of the infrastructure is going to be that, to, if you're a city resident or maybe you just have your water from the city, it's going to be able that we can control the wastewater from that as well. I think that's a big part of infrastructure. You know, the county honestly provides a lot of the services to the city, but one of the things that I voted on just recently is to hire two additional police officers in order to, the population's going up in the city, we've got to hire two police officers. So that's what we've done to take steps in order to make sure that our citizens stay safe. So when you see those police officers at Main Street Park, it's because we voted for that to happen. We want to make sure that our facilities are being watched. We want to make sure that the citizens that use the park are being safe, and so that's one of the services that we've done already. So, yeah?
I echo both of what these gentlemen have said. Anything that happens in the city is going to touch at least two things, the streets and infrastructure in terms of water consumption. We've been very blessed, and the previous councils have done good planning, our lead our water systems in good shape. We want to make sure that we have the ability to provide service to those seeking to relocate to the city. So we need to continue to focus on ensuring that we have not only the capacity to meet our current needs, but also our future needs. Switching back over in terms of infrastructure, the roads, and working with the Board Commissioners, GDOT, and getting a truck route around the city, I believe by doing that, investing money and time there will allow us then to dress up downtown, make it more walkable, make it more pedestrian friendly, and entice more businesses to locate to the city center, which would be a benefit to us all.
All right. Question three, and William, I hope you will start this one off for us. Dawsonville's city charter currently allows three City Council members to vote to remove a mayor. Should three council members have the power to override the citizens' votes, or should the charter be amended?
That's a good question. Well, I think, I think that it, a lot of times when you're on City Council, and I've just experienced this from being on council for four months, a lot of times you get to see, you know, what happens behind the scenes, right? And so I feel like there is some, the citizens entrust the council to make decisions on their behalf, and so I think that our charter says that that's one of those decisions that three or more should make, so yeah, I do believe that it should stay that way, especially because if the mayor does something that maybe doesn't fall in line with where he's supposed to be legally, or he puts the city at risk at any point, then it's up to the council to make that hard decision. But it's got to be weighed with, you know, merit, you've got to look through it, because that's no light decision to do. So yes, I do believe that it should stay the way it is.
Mark?
Well, we actually send this play out in the not-too-distant past, which may have contributed to the question, as the charter was updated somewhat recently. I never liked overturning will of people. However, sometimes situations could occur, people could take actions which would merit a very drastic decision. I think in the event that this needed to occur in the future, council would be very wise to seek to have public hearings, get public input. Granted, the charter does grant a certain powers and authorities that are charged to execute, and when you take the oath of office, you say that you will do it. So you've already given your word to the people, you will do what the charter says, but it doesn't mean you should stop listening to what the people want. You have to look, too, and balance, me being a big counter on a finance guy, you have to look at what the cost is associated with doing that, and it can become incredibly expensive, not only to the person in office, but also to the citizens themselves. I would agree to keep it. If that's something that the people would like to change, that person to reach out to us. If you would like to see us modify our charter, that can be done. It is a rather lengthy process, but it can be done. We certainly need to make sure that we're attentive to the current needs, desires, and express opinions of our constituency.
Thank you very much. Jamie McCracken?
Sure. If there's a, the one thing in the Bible I think makes tons of sense with me being a mere mortal, is there is safety in a multitude of counselors. So my daily routine is I make difficult decisions every day, and some of them are pretty easy, but the more difficult those decisions are, the more people can bring safety to that situation. And this is one of those things that, you know, I don't have as much experience with the City Council in removal, removal of mayors, I know these guys make hell of more experience, but my life experience says, I would 100% agree with, you know, amending the charter to let the people have a voice in that. You know, when it comes down to personalities or, you know, small group, all it takes is just come home in a bad mood one day, and, you know, I promise my wife wants to kick me out the door sometimes, right? But the reality is, sometimes emotions get in the way of reality. We have a decision such as removing a mayor, that requires probably a few more voices than the City Council. So I would say amending the charter, I'd be 100% open to that.
As you all may or may not know, business is very important to the Chamber. We pride ourselves on being the voice of business. So this next question is around business. In your opinion, what are the biggest challenges for new and existing city business owners, and what are your plans for addressing this issue? And we'll start with Mark.
Thank you. Right off the bat, it's going to be parking, foot traffic, and the safety of those people out there on the sidewalks, which we've seen to improve those situations. But I think the thing that we can do to best serve them is to coordinate with the, excuse me, GDOT, to get a bypass built around, or track route, whatever you want to call it, something that would enable the city to get heavy traffic from the trucks off the roads and outside of the city proper. In order to do that, we have to get the state to agree to abandon the track away inside the footpath. Having grown up in Delano, I've seen how this works. Some people were, and well, if you do this, downtown businesses could suffer. Go to Delano and tell me how the downtown businesses suffered. It's done correctly. Delano had a great road mile for us to follow. They got the bypass built, they started doing the street skates. They made improvements, made it far more attractive for businesses to locate in town, and they just speak off of each other, which is a good thing for all of us. It gives the business owner an opportunity to make a good return to their investment. It helps draw more people in, and it gives us sales tax dollars, which as a city that lives solely off of sales tax dollars, is very important. Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah. So if you poll the city, even the folks inside of the government, and the boards that sit around town planning development, you would get asked the same question, and you would get a multitude of answers, and the reason being is there's no current master plan for the city. So what is the ultimate goal and vision for the city? That's the most important thing. That's the challenge, is we could unify some buildings, that could be the focus, or do some landscaping, super important, change traffic patterns. All those are important, but what is the ultimate goal? So the DDA, we have investigated that recently. Mr. Popols let us know that there's a, there's a movement to get a new master plan for the city, and with the explosive residential growth that's going on, I can't imagine just starting to do hodgepodge things without having an ultimate goal for where we're going. But what does Dawsonville look like? Is it a restaurant? Is it another park? Is it venues? What are we looking at? That's where our challenges are, is unification of the city is part of it, of course, traffic patterns are part of it, but we need to have a picture of where we're going in the city. And I think the master plan is 100%. That's what has to be in place, but everybody in our government needs to be driving to that point to get that master plan wrapped up in place so we can all go forward.
William?
Thank you. You guys are probably going to have to cut me off on this one. Okay, so I love this topic, and the reason why is because out of everything on City Council, the best part of it is the DDA. It's the best part. The reason why is because the DDA is responsible for attracting and retaining local businesses to downtown Dawsonville. I'm a local business owner, my wife's a local business owner. Okay, so I'm all about this, all right? But there's certain challenges that come in. Number one, Mark French hit it on the head, roads, we've got to build a bypass. Well, building a bypass, I sat in a meeting with Commissioner Fawcett and another council member named John Walden, and we talked to GDOT, and it takes a lot of money to build a bypass. So we've got to figure out how to get the money to do it, okay? And if we can't build a bypass, then we have to figure out how in the world do we relocate downtown? How do we figure out to make the land acquisitions that we need to make in order to get our businesses in a position where they can, they can market sufficiently to the citizens? Okay, so that's number one. Number two, there's got to be collaboration between businesses. So I'm working currently with the Racing Hall of Fame, AMP, and hopefully Fajitas to get an entertaining night in Dawsonville where they all commit to kind of playing well together, and somehow somebody can come in, they can go to the Racing Hall of Fame, they can go explore AMP, and then they can go eat at Fajitas. Or another one is outside the lines, if you guys have ever been there, and the Bowen Center partnering up and maybe doing some kind of food thing. And then last thing, last thing, okay? We need an economic development person, okay? We don't have anyone in the city whose job is to wake up, to eat, breathe, and to work on getting businesses to our city. We have to hire this person, or else it's not going to happen. It doesn't happen by mistake. It happens on purpose. I love talking about this.
We can tell. Passion shines through. It's awesome. It's awesome. It's awesome. We've actually had several conversations about it. Okay, so this question always comes up, and it's already been mentioned, I think, by Jamie, but we have to ask, because it is just always part of what you will have to deal with when you are sitting in a City Council seat. It's about consolidated government. So advocates of consolidated government typically are supportive of the efficiency of a combined government. Would you favor the consolidation of our city and county governments? Why or why not? And this one, oh, you'll have to pattern figure it out, that is.
Yeah. Yeah. Definitely, I'm not a proponent of a consolidated government. What if there was only the dictator in America, and they made the ultimate decisions? That's efficient, right? That's the most efficient, is one guy makes the decision. But the reality is, we kind of want government to be a little collision. We want it to be hard. That way, it takes a lot of thought to make decisions. So being in the city, and all the things that are the focus of the people who live inside the city limits, it's going to require us to have a voice, quite honestly. But, so if you're out and about, and you ask somebody about Dawsonville, and you say, "Hey, have you ever been to Dawsonville?" "Oh, yeah, we've been to the Alamo Hall before." "You ever heard that before?" Yeah, so at the end of the day, the city's a very small area. All these neighborhoods are going in. I just can't imagine the residents of the city of Dawsonville already having a voice to go, "Take this voice back. We don't want it anymore. We want the guys down at 400 to have a voice for us." Can't imagine that in a million years. No, I do not think that we should have consolidated government.
Thank you. Will?
It's a good question, and it's one of the things that, my, my first week, I was riding in the truck with somebody at my church. We did like a golf event at the church, and I was like, "Yeah, this is who I am. I'm on City Council." And he goes, "Oh, City Council." He goes, "Are you guys going to consolidate?" And I was like, "Well, tell me what you think about that." He was like, "I just think we're wasting a whole lot of resources by doing that." And I said, "Okay, uh, you can tell me like what specific resources?" And he couldn't. And, and the reason why I just tell that story is because I think in general, the idea of consolidation is really nice. I think in general, okay? The idea of, wait, so I don't have to have two different departments? I can have one department. It sounds good, but I think local government is the closest that the people's voices get to the government. So the smaller you can get it, the louder your voice becomes. So for that reason, I don't think it's a good idea to consolidate. Now, do I think that collaboration is a must? I went to a class in Savannah, it's the GMA, the Georgia Municipal Association, they do this convention where they train councilmen, commissioner, they train city managers, they train all of these people, right? And one of the things that they talk about is you cannot operate in asylum. Like, when you have something going on, you can't just do it yourself and expect somehow the county's going to know about it. And so I think that's why we must have a running, open dialogue between the city and the county, because yes, I live in the city, but I'm also a member of the county, and so it's both, I think. And so ultimately, I don't, I would not support it.
Mark?
Thank you. I want to have a slightly different opinion than the gentleman I'm up here with this evening. We, three of us can sit up here all evening and theorize about the benefits and detriments of a combined government, but I've waited until you hire an outside independent party to explain what the benefits are to you, what the detriments are to you, to become more familiar with things which probably we could never even thought of, which I'm sure there are many that I haven't thought of. I look at it as kind of, if you're going to buy a vehicle, you step onto the dealer's lot, and you don't just say, "Well, I want a sedan," and just buy a sedan. You look at everything that happened. You do your research, which one best suits your needs, which one is the best value? Depending on our study, if we were able to do one that gives, I may not be a paper route, but I think until we spend the money, which we have to do, we really don't know the true pros and cons of doing so, and I think it would behoove ourselves to do that rather than just rely on our own sole judgment.
Fairness. Okay, Main Street Park. Okay, Main Street Park, which is fabulous, by the way. It's been a long time coming, and a long-waited project from your predecessors on the city council, and they have finally brought it to existence. We can all agree, the park is such a huge asset to the city and the community as a whole. However, it's not come without struggles of day-to-day management, oversight of patrons who occupy the park. What would be your long-term plan to maintain the quality of the park and public safety for the patrons?
Well, first of all, I could not agree more that I had nothing to do with the park, okay? I stepped in, and the park was built, and I'm on city council, so a lot of people are like, "Hey, great park." I'm like, "I didn't do anything." But it is a fabulous park. It's probably arguably the best thing in the city. I enjoy it with my son, we go to the playground. So the first thing is, I think we took a huge step with making sure to hire the police officers. Because we have videos at the park, and people do not always use the park the right way, okay? And so it's good to be able to have videos. When you're at the park, just know you're on video, okay? And it's good that we have police officers, that if you're not doing something that you should be doing, or vice versa, that they make sure to take care of that. I think also, we got plans to keep the park, to continue to increase what's in the park, right? And so we gotta focus on that, but also make sure that in 10 years from now, that the park is not ran down, and that it's no longer relevant. So the park may have to change as the population changes. Right now, I think the majority population is 34 to 50 in Dawsonville. Since that's the majority of the population, it makes sense to have a playground, right? But there may come a time, if we're all getting older and retiring, that the playground becomes less meaningful, and so we may pivot and do something else. But I think it's gotta serve the citizens, right? And so it's gonna make sure that we're keeping up with the age of the citizens, making sure that we're keeping it relevant. And so the way that we do that is by making sure that we have the money on hand to do it. If we gotta develop, if we gotta do something to improve it, we spend the money on it.
All I can say is, as I've been on the council, there are probably two things I hear most about that people are happy with. Number one is Main Street Park, number two is our farmer's market. Huge successes, both of them were funded through your sales tax dollars, which is a huge one. Trouble with sales tax dollars is you can use it for capital expenditures, not maintenance. So we have to be creative in making sure, as Will said, we not only maintain what we have, but we do budgeting that would allow us to enable it to evolve over time to suit the changing needs of our constituents. I agree that, and I was very concerned when we first started doing it, if we didn't have security cameras down there. Your children are down there, and there's nothing more precious to you than your children. I think that's a good step. Being able to have the extra law enforcement officers is a wonderful tool as well. So I think if we continue along this trend of properly budgeting, making sure that we can do our maintenance, ensure that the facilities are top-notch and second-to-none, which I believe we make very good balance toward that. Connecting it with the sidewalks throughout the city has made it more accessible to more people, and that's another good thing for us there. So thank you.
One of the interesting things about the park, of course, we love it like everyone else does, but that was a part of the last master plan that the city put in place. It's nice to see that all that work that went in, say, 10 years ago, it came to fruition. That park is in place, the farmer's market, agreed, crowning jewels of the city. I mean, what a neat thing. And also, during this COVID, you know, situation that we've been involved in the last year and a half, two years, it's all those folks that aren't at their jobs anymore, they're not going to a brick-and-mortar building, they're teleworking, they're sitting at home. Because if you go in the middle of the day, there are people out there hanging out at the park. I mean, how awesome is that? The timing was so good. So I think three things are needed for that park. It's gotta be clean, it's gotta be safe, and it has to be relevant. And keeping it relevant is just gonna have to be a focus of the city. It's gonna have to be, you know, as William said, you know, it's different generations of folks are going to the park, whatever, it just has to be relevant for everyone that's going, for sure. It has to, the money has to be allocated yearly to maintain that park properly. And all those mothers out there with kids climbing all over that playground, I promise you, they wanna clean it, upkeep it constantly. So it's one of those things, it's beautiful, a ton of investment has gone into it, and the city's responsibility is to make sure that ongoing maintenance happens in that park, so it's funded properly. It'd be terrible to see something so great just go into disrepair. And, you know, that's something that will be a focus of mine for sure, is to make sure that thing is perpetual.
Jamie, you have mentioned a few times about the master plan from 2013, and I know that the city is doing, making some strides in trying to update, do a new master plan, which I'm very excited about. But what would be some takeaways from the existing master plan that you would wanna see go into the new master plan?
I know you'll get tired of hearing me say this, I'll ask. That's critical to us, as I stated before. In order to really make downtown walkable, we could go in today and do all sorts of landscaping and make it truly beautiful. But until we have reached the means by which we can encourage tractor-trailer traffic not to be through there, destroying, I mean, how many times have you been around and seen the fence around the historic courthouse damaged? That's not going to stop until we do that. As Will indicated, this one would take considerable amount of money to accomplish this, which would be beneficial if we had transportation sales tax. Could be one way of finding, coordinating with our state representative, the lady who happens to live in Dawsonville, that's a wonderful thing for us. Our state senator lives over DeWannigah, Steve Gedge, of whom I know and have a good relationship with, and I believe that would be critical to helping us secure funding and passing things through the Georgia Department of Transportation to perhaps fast-track this. If anything, can truly be fast-tracking government. That's a bit of an oxymoron there. But those are the things I'd like to see, the plan that we had did improve walkability downtown, and I believe that's critical to support our local businesses.
So it's very easy to, you know, put a plan, it's not easy, but to put a plan together and say, "We're going to do," you know, five years down the road, and I've heard dates on this bypass that's gonna happen, it's maybe 10 years out, it's some, you know, a decade. And that's great, there's plans in place to start, you know, working on the downtown and do that properly, according to the master plan, and the beautification that's in that, the whole master plan, you know, landscaping, G dots in the way, something, if you start looking for problems, there are a million problems and obstacles that we currently have. And if we waited as a city for all of those problems to be eradicated before we do anything, we'll do nothing. Because next thing you know, we're into another generation, eh, we don't care about that anymore, you know, we're sitting up watching the sunsets, right? But the reality is, we have to also work with what we have. Of course, we have traffic issues, well, let's work around those, let's do what we can, let's negotiate with G dot. I know there's a lot of that going on currently, but let's restart those conversations. Hey, what do you guys think about us doing some landscaping in this diamond in town? Let's, there's some things that we can do today, that's gonna have to be the focus. Yes, we need to be planning for tomorrow, but we have the resources and assets that we have today, we have to focus on using those properly until their fullest potential, exploit them as far as we can.
Yes. I'm giving both you guys high fives in my hand right now. Yes, yes, to all that. Also, if you haven't seen the master plan from 2013, it's really, really good. It's a really good plan. It's a little dated, right, happening in 2013, but it's good. There's some really good elements in it. So if you're asking for what the specific elements that I really enjoyed in it, well, there was a beautiful kind of brick sign that they said to put in at that, you know, three kind of intersection right there, Highway 9 and 53, that's the weird triangle kind of looking thing, if you guys know what I'm talking, putting a sign right there, it was really beautiful, it says, "Welcome to Historic Dawsonville." Like, I thought that was great, can't do that, this is a G dot, right? So there was also on there, it was like this restaurant called The Scotty. If you guys didn't know, our county is shaped like a Scotty, dog, okay? So we got the name The Scotty, that's where the Chamber got their mascot from, okay? So outside of this cool little restaurant was this outdoor kind of, it's not a pavilion, but like a picnic area with really beautiful trees, and, you know, manicured really nicely. It's got the lights that hang over, that's all the trend right now, yeah, then 2013. It's still trendy. So there, I love that in it. It took different buildings, where there was like one building here, and then another building here, and nothing in the middle, and said, "Well, what if you were to put a building right there in the middle? What would that look like?" It took the car dealership that's in downtown, if you guys know, right there at that triangle, and said, "What if that was a classical car dealership to help kind of influence the classical, you know, cars and the NASCARs and stuff like that that we do in Dawsonville." So it has a lot of great things in it that we could take over into the new master plan.
Very nice. If you were to take the city council seat in January, what would be your top three priorities? And I know Mark, I can guess what it is, I'm sorry, I keep reiterating, but your top three priorities, if you were to take city council in January?
Sure. Top three priorities would be, number one, maybe revisiting some of those challenges that have been perpetual, right? Negotiating with landowners in the city, I've heard that come up quite a few times. You know, take a stab at those things again, it's pretty easy to have a hard situation, just close the book and walk away from it. So that's number one, is negotiating and doing some conflict resolution to revisit those things that maybe have those have been holdups in the past. Two is, do everything we can, I know it sounds like Groundhog Day, but the master plan, get that in place so we all have direction going forward. You know, making sure that we're all on the same page, working towards the same goals, and we're not going in 40 different directions. Lastly, is those things that we need now, so the park, the food truck nights, those things are all great, we need to build on those things. Use the venues we have in town, are doing some live music, boy, would that be great. I think, you know, I think probably all of us are guilty to go into surrounding towns because Dawsonville currently hasn't had what we need all the time. So there's some great things here, but there are some gaps. So the focus would be to try our best to get those things that are already being talked about, or maybe the need to get on the table going, so we can make this city our tourist destination. So we're not going somewhere, we're tourists here in our own town enjoying it.
Okay, three priorities. It all centers around business, okay? When it comes to the priorities that I like to work on, that I like to focus on, I think it's strange that we live in a community and we have to drive six long miles to 400 to get a dry cleaner. Something right, y'all, something right. We gotta do something about that, okay? So we need businesses that can help us with services like dry cleaning, like a bakery, like an ice cream shop, stuff like that. And in order for us to get those, we have to hire an economic development person. Like, someone that is skilled, is a, they're a master of their craft, right? That's not me, that's not our city manager, that's not anybody at the city. We have to go out and recruit that person, and find the best of the best, and get them to Dawsonville. That's number one, I would hire that person. Number two, continue with the DDA on marketing. We have an outlet mall that attracts thousands of people, and yet the DDA has no marketing at that outlet mall to say, "Hey, six and a half miles more this way, you could be in downtown Dawsonville and enjoy some of the things that we have to offer." So we have to figure out how to creatively market to get people from the outlet mall down the Highway 53 to downtown Dawsonville. We have to generate more money within our footprint, because we're not very good at doing that. Number three, the amphitheater, I don't know if you guys are aware of this or not, but at Main Street Park, there might be an amphitheater, there's supposed to be an amphitheater. I would love to see that. My background with theater, I went to school for theater, that's what I did, I would love to see an amphitheater in Main Street Park and have some music concert, or have the local high school come over and perform Hamlet there. I think it would be awesome to get the whole community involved. So that's what I would do, first, top three priorities.
Thank you. Number one, as I mentioned when I began my introduction, is I'd like to seek to mend fences with board commissioners, it's critical that our two parties be able to work together for each other's mutual benefit. We don't need to continue to file losses when things don't go our way, and they end up with less money and little bills, that's not very wise. So that's my first thing. The second thing we need to do is, we need to work on getting a clear service delivery area with that Water and Civil Authority. So city continues to grow, we'll be bumping heads with them on occasion, it would be really nice if we had a clear current contract and understanding within as to what our service area is. That way, we can do as well as attract more businesses into town, more developments, it could be residential developments, they could be mixed-use, things of that nature. Third, I know you all have, probably guess what I'm gonna say, gotta work together with the DOT and the board commissioners on getting that truck route expedited.
Great. All right, Will, you are gonna kick us off and give your closing statement.
Okay, closing statement. All right, if over the past hour, you want to support me in getting elected, here's what I need you to do. Like my Facebook page, follow William Ilg, Dawsonville City Council, William Ilg, Dawsonville City Council. I just released my campaign video earlier today, please consider liking and sharing that, and then telling your neighbors about it. But if you wanna go a step further and join the campaign, all you have to do is get a little gathering together in your home with your neighbors. I'll come speak, answer any questions that you have about your city, or myself, I already have one of these coming up for the Rain Hill subdivision, so I would love to be your party guest. Lastly, if you see me out and about in your neighborhood, honk your horn, say hello, because I would love to get to know you. Thank you so much for the opportunity, I appreciate you guys.
I'd like to start by again thanking the Chamber for hosting, and all of you being here this evening, still allowing us to use this facility. I'd also like to thank the two gentlemen up here with me this evening. Politics can be a crow of our worst business, but they make it fun, and we've been very civil to each other, and I appreciate that. Because I believe that what we all have in common is, we wanna serve the citizens to the best of our ability, and to the degree to which they deserve, and in part. I would encourage you to look at my voting history since I've been on the council, I'm proud of it, I think I've made some good steps for us. And if I'm something that you believe you'd like to see continue, I would appreciate your vote. But more importantly to me than that is that you do vote, even if it's not for me. It's a few places in the world we truly have the opportunity to select those people that represent us, and that's something, nothing should be taken lightly. Thank you.
It's super encouraging to see all you guys out here tonight, these guys up here, the Chamber being involved, that in this small hometown of ours, people are engaged and wanna see the best for the city, so we can all enjoy it more. And my family and I, we are planted in the city, we're not going anywhere, you know, my wife's talking about swimming pools, you know, what you do, that's where they are. So, but anyway, so we have a stake here, and selfishly, we want to see the city grow forward. Appreciating the past, you know, everything the city has going for it, I mean, what other city can say, "We had moonshot runners coming out here." That's awesome. NASCAR, Chase, I mean, there's so many things going on in this city that are great, that will just propel us forward, we have some good catalysts. So appreciate you guys coming out tonight, thank you guys for hosting this event, all the folks that are here that are currently involved in the city government, or volunteers, or thank you, thank you guys for laying the groundwork that we get to, you know, like William was saying, you know, people are thanking him for the park, well, it had anything to do with the park, and you know what? Thank you guys for all the work that you've done, really, thank you very much. Love this city, our hearts here, and thank these guys for also coming out tonight. And we'd love to be a part of the city council, but November the 2nd, come out and vote.
Well, I too would like to thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you to you gentlemen for coming out as well, taking time away from your families this evening to come out. It's very important, we feel, at the Chamber and our advocacy committee, to be sure that we have events such as this, so that you can see and make an educated vote on who you would like to see represent you. So we are very thankful that it's not an easy business, as you said, and very thankful for all the elected officials that are in the room, because... and very thankful for all the elected officials that are in the room because it is not an easy job. I know. Well, not specifically, but I'm around you guys all the time. So I know it's not something that I desire to do. So I'm very thankful that we do have citizens in our community that would want to step up and represent the citizens. So thank you so much for that. So help me in giving a round of applause. So if you could give a round of applause for Ms. Kim White, she's the principal of Dawson County Middle School, for letting us use her as a candidate. Just a few reminders. Also, thank you for those who submitted questions. Some of them were very difficult questions, so I appreciate you being very candid and honest and answering them fully. But a few quick reminders, so the last day to register to vote is October 4th. Our advanced voting begins Monday, October 12th. You can vote Monday through Friday at the Dawson County Board Elections Office from 9 to 5. Election day is November 2nd. Mark your calendar. You can also view this forum on the Chamber YouTube page. We will also post it to our Facebook page as well, so you can just look up Dawson County Chamber and give us a like as well. And we encourage you to, and everyone you know, to vote. Again, we don't care who you vote for, we want everyone to be able to have a voice. So encourage everyone to register to vote and get out to vote for one of these candidates, the one that you believe supports the issues and your needs for our local business community. Thank you all for coming tonight. Drive safely.